And I want to welcome you to the Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, study session of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Before we, can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Vice Chair Alain.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rotman.
Present.
Before we begin the study session, I want to do something a little outside of our normal purview. And I want to open the meeting in memory of Lynn Calardine. For people who are here, you know that Lynn was recently appointed to the Planning Commission. I think he served two meetings with us. But he's somebody who has a very long history with the city of Palm Springs. And when he moved to Palm Springs, and I think '03, he joined the General Plan Steering Committee and did, and was very involved in a complete overhaul of the general plan that Palm Springs has. And he carried that information with him. He served with me on the Planning Commission from 2011 to 2018. And during that time, we did the downtown specific plan. We redid the PDG ordinances. We revised the golf course ordinance. And we worked on Maryland, Ascena, every, every large and small development that you might see as a new development in the city and recently. He had a pretty big footprint on that. And recently, he also served five years on the General Plan Steering Committee. Lynn had a tremendous background. He had worked for LSA in Orange County from the 1980s. And he had an environmental specialty. I think he started off creating the hiking trails and the bike trails in Orange County. He always had an environmental interest when he was here. I was just talking with David, saying that whenever I wanted to know anything about the Coachella Valley, multiple species habitat ordinance, including its name, I could always turn to Lynn and ask him what the specifics were because he had worked on it. Lynn went from LSA in Orange County to being the Environmental Planning Director for San Francisco Airport during an airport expansion. And then he came to Palm Springs, I think he had relatives here, and in 2004, 2003, 2004, opened up the LSA office and was involved in a lot of the transportation and environmental planning in the valley. He shared his information with all of us. He was very civically minded, as well as brought a tremendous amount of professional experience. And it's with great sadness that I say that he passed away a week ago Monday. He's, he was just a very valuable person to Palm Springs. And there are a couple of members who've known him from LSA who would like to speak for a moment about him. And if you're here and you would like to speak.
Thank you. I'm Grant Wilson, formerly a Sustainability Commissioner. So I'm with the way the city operates, and I'm here with Jody Ross Borrego. We both worked with Lynn, starting about the time he started the Palm Springs office. And I think I can speak for both of us in saying that we wouldn't be connected to Palm Springs at all if it weren't for Lynn. And we're very grateful for that. Not just for helping us through our careers, but helping us settle in a place that we love. So, thank you very much. We're very honored to be associated with Lynn.
And the one thing I forgot to mention was that he started as, with a nonprofit, I think, started CD Link, which is very important to the entire valley. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving forward. We have a, our study session. And David, do you want to open, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? Or should I take, I would rather take public testimony after we get the report from the Sustainability Commission. But is there a specific way we should handle this?
It might be good to open a public comment at this point because there may be questions during the presentation before commissioners provide comments. And there may be commissioners who wish to provide comments during the presentation from our sustainability staff. So we might open it, I don't know if there's interest from the public to speak.
Is there anybody online who wants to speak? Members of the commission, I don't know if you've seen that we've gotten correspondence from the Oswalt Land Trust? And it's on your desks if you haven't had a chance to read, does anybody need to read it? Or have you read it previously? Then shall we go forward with the presentation? Public hearing is closed.
Yes, Madam Chair. So tonight, we, for our topic of discussion is the city of Palm Springs regarding a potential citywide tree protection ordinance. This discussion item is being spearheaded by our Sustainability Department. And tonight, we have the director and a team member who have been working intimately on this ordinance. And so I'll let them introduce themselves. And we're happy that, that they're helping us with crafting this important ordinance.
Okay, thank you so much, David. Thanks to the planning team and Honorable Planning Commission for having us this evening. And my condolences on the passing of your fellow commissioner. So my name is LP McCloy. I know some of you. I worked with Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Baker's role on the Sustainability Commission. Have worked with Vice Chair Alain and have begun to work with Chair Wermick as well. The rest of you I'm really excited to meet this evening. I'm the Director of the Sustainability Department. We are a small and mighty team, now of four, which is very exciting for us. And I'm here joined by my colleague, Christian Wheeler, our Climate and Sustainability Specialist, who you'll get to know through the course of the presentation. So our department does a number of different things here in the city. But one of my favorite things that we do is that we work with teams across the city to help empower them to take bold climate action embedded in their existing work and their plans. And one other thing that you may know, if you've worked with me, this is maybe the first time in my life I've written something down that I wanted to say. But I know the Planning Commission is a commission of details, so I wanted to come ready. So we're here today to talk to you about a key component of our new strategies to better manage our urban tree canopy. So the city of Palm Springs committed to achieving the Tree City designation actually back in 2016's Sustainability Master Plan that was released at that time. The designation requires establishing an ordinance to maintain public trees. We also, though, have been working with our department colleagues across the city about trees in a number of different ways. So Christian's going to talk to you a lot more about why we think trees are so great. As you know, you probably agree generally. But some of the specific ways in which this is popping up in our work as it relates to active transportation, urban heat, other things. So I'll let Christian talk to you more about that. And then also, as our city continues to grow, as we continue to evolve the uses of our spaces, and as we're also required to pursue ever more urgent and strict water conservation mandates, our departments are facing a lot of new questions about how best to maintain our tree canopy, how to expand it, how to promulgate better shade equity across our city. You'll probably know, just from living here, there's some places that have a lot of shade and some places that don't. Kind of tracks where you think that might track. And how to also thoughtfully preserve and, in some cases, remove and replace trees in both public space, so spaces that are owned and stewarded by the city, but also spaces that I kind of refer to as almost like commons space. So privately owned public spaces that are shared and experienced by different publics who are already reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in some way, or not Planning Commission, Planning Department in some way. And so Christian's going to walk you through a lot of the best practices that we've collated, both in collaboration with departments here in the city. So working with planning, public works, you know, talking with our city's contracted arborists, and then also informed by the work of a lot of other cities. So we're not the first city to try to figure out how to do this. But as Christian will explain, every city does it real different. So we've kind of created our own little set of what we think are good practices to look at here in Palm Springs. And so the recommendations, we're excited to review kind of topic wise today. So you're not looking at a specific ordinance draft today, mostly because we want to get your feedback on whether we're on the right track in terms of the priority areas and mechanisms here in the city to do this, based on your understanding of how you review things from a Planning Commission perspective. So the, the topics do exceed the requirements of the Tree City designation. So we've gotten a little bit above and beyond just hitting that basic threshold. But we've selected them intentionally to align with current city processes. So you're not seeing anything here that's going to require new permits, completely new work streams. Happy to have a conversation about where this fits with existing city resourcing. But it is intended to roughly align with things that we kind of already do. And so we're attempting to clarify and codify a lot of practices that are existing in some way. And then also adding a couple of new things to help us set a clear and actionable tree management baseline is our goal. So we also know that one ordinance alone does not aid an urban tree canopy make. So we're going to be also working on sets of public guidelines to help people understand how to best, you know, maintain their trees in the space, recommended species lists that can help people choose the right plants and things to plant. Also working on internal process improvements where that helps. And then also looking at grants for future programs to help improve that shade equity and that tree canopy to get more trees and where places, places that don't have them that could use them. And so we look forward particularly to your feedback on how this ordinance can help us establish that ambitious and achievable tree management standard here in our city. So we're open to a lot of questions. Christian's going to walk you through a great presentation on how we've been thinking about this. And so I'm going to turn it over to Christian, who brings a background in forestry and also in code enforcement and climate planning. So he's the best person to take us from here.
So hello, everyone. I'm Christian Wheeler. I work as the Climate and Sustainability Specialist with Sustainability Department. And so I'll walk you through the ordinance. So a little bit on the background. So as LP said, this is an implementation item from the 2016 Sustainability Master Plan. Along with that, you know, we had the goals of adopting a tree protection ordinance, not just, you know, becoming a tree city, which is part of that. And in addition to this, we had goals of continually replacing our urban forestry. You know, the trees that have been removed or that have died or that are dying. In addition to this, as Linty has said, the State Water Resources Control Board is, you know, doing some limitations on, you know, water usage across the state. And this is just one kind of mechanism that would give us allowance, at least, you know, to use water for landscaping for trees. So communities with Tree City recognition and, you know, communities that are promoting climate-ready landscapes, as they call it. And then in addition to this, I work on not just tree stuff, but also transportation stuff and greenhouse gases. So we have been also working on getting together a multimodal heat mitigation transportation plan. And shade trees go like perfectly along with this. So the main goals of this ordinance, so these are kind of the, you know, main overarching chapters. So limiting the removal of trees, prohibiting and discouraging certain practices, establishing a class of protected trees, and establishing a removal and replacement process. And along with this, just codifying the current processes that we already, you know, utilize, especially within the public works and with our contractors. So the scope of this ordinance, so it would cover public trees, such as, you know, trees in parks, public properties, medians and parkways, and private trees, you know, those that are subject to a approved landscape plan. So, you know, those on commercial properties, multifamily homes, HOAs, and public right of ways. So things that would be prohibited under this ordinance. Harmful behaviors and practices that could lead to the death or deterioration of a tree. So that, such as excessive pruning, tree topping, girdling, poisoning, those things. Unauthorized removal of trees, also tree stumps, and then practices that would damage or interfere with wildlife nesting.
Tree stumps, but that doesn't say anything.
Okay, so.
It's a removal of tree stumps, or?
Leaving tree stumps. So generally, it should be kind of graded down to, I believe, four inches because they are, one, a safety hazard, and then, two, they can, you know, attract things such as termites, which can spread to, you know, homes and other woody, you know, vegetation and things like that.
Just taking a step back to the first page. This is really important, but I think the reasons to do it need to be very articulated. And just becoming a tree city, wanting to do that, it's something that Lori and I talked about, I don't think is enough. I think, I think you have to ground this in preventing, in reducing urban heat, shade equity. I, I think there, it has to be really solid grounding and a solid concern about it within the city so that if you just pass a tree ordinance or we just become a tree city, but the city manager, the city council, the powers that be aren't firmly committed to this, it'll be just something on the books.
Thank you, Chair. And so we primarily highlighted this here mostly just to show the history of how long our, our city has been talking about pursuing, you know, the Tree City and a tree ordinance here as well. That's just the first recorded instance that we have. But, but agree with you that we see this as being important to do now because it's so closely tied with our urban heat work and water management and shade mitigation. So I appreciate that comment.
Excuse me, can you just, it's a really basic question. Can you talk about what the Tree City program is and what criteria they have to, that we want to achieve?
Yes, so it's started by the Arbor Day Foundation, and they just recognize. Yes, so it's started by the Arbor Day Foundation, and they just recognize communities for like, you know, really great urban forestry management and, you know, education and expertise. And so with that, you need four standards that you have to complete to become recognized. So one is celebrating Arbor Day, which we did recently at the farmer's market with our contracted arborists. Two is having a, you know, governing authority over public trees, which is our Public Works via their contract with West Coast Arborist. Three is the tree ordinance, which that's the one that we're lacking. And then four is, I think I'm forgetting.
Certain per capita spending on trees, so we greatly exceed it. I don't remember, I think it's like a dollar per-
Yeah, dollar per person, but we are at four million with our, yeah, with our contract.
We win that one.
And as a follow-up on that question, a tree ordinance is required. Can you explain what, how they define a tree ordinance? Because that could be a lot of different things, and I'm not sure what we're trying to, sure what the goal is or what the definition is that we're trying to meet.
Yes, so in their standards for a tree ordinance, it's really an ordinance that protects public trees and delegates authorities, so who has authority to plant, maintain, and remove public trees, basically prohibiting harming public trees, and then also just establishing care practice for public trees. So with this ordinance, we are looking to exceed that bit.
Okay, and how do they define public trees? Is that, so that could be private trees in the public right-of-way?
Theirs is strictly kind of, you know, public properties, you know, parks, things like that. They don't really dive into, you know, things in the public right-of-way. It's a bit vague, and I don't know if you guys were able to look at Indian Wells' municipal code, like that's kind of the bare minimum, and that's kind of the general model that they presented that you could use.
Thank you.
And every city I've read included trees in the public right-of-way that had been, that might be maintained or not maintained by the city. I think Santa Monica, when I was there, had an arborist who maintained all of the trees in the public right-of-way and did, we watered them, they trimmed them. So there's various ranges as to what cities, am I correct, as to what cities do in terms of owning their public right-of-way?
Yeah, that's correct. You'll see a few different interpretations of that in a few of the different ordinances that we looked at.
Just to throw one thing out, it's not here, is that study that was done by the Desert Sun, where Palm Springs has a third of the trees of Palm Desert, that we're one of the, we have one of the lowest percentages of trees of any of the valley cities, and certainly of the wealthier valley cities.
That, that's correct. And we also do see that pretty starkly differentiated within our city. So there's some areas of the city where we do meet a relatively dense tree density, but if you look at, for example, the north end of Palm Springs, it's pretty, pretty low. There's a few different shade equity metrics that, you know, you can look at at a broad scope. That's also something we're hoping to dive into later this year as well, but we don't have as many trees as other places, and the trees we do have are certainly not equally distributed here.
So I'd like to continue. So also within this ordinance, ordinance is protection, protecting trees. So we would establish a class of protected trees, so those could be trees with heritage, cultural, community significance, or, you know, quote, specimen trees. It would also be trees with a trunk diameter of at least 12 inches or greater, and it could be any tree designated for protection during a review process or approval of a development project. So, you know, something like a specimen tree that doesn't necessarily fit the 12-inch diameter metric. Addition to this, we would require establishing a tree protection zone for the critical root zone, so when there is development happening near a public or, you know, private tree, they would have to establish this zone to protect the tree essentially. And then also for, if someone wants to remove a tree, we would require an arborist report and appraisal to see, you know, the status of the tree, if there is, you know, a significant reason why they want to remove it, what's the health status, what would be a good replacement value, and things like that. Yep.
And just a quick note on terminology. When we say private tree, we are referring to trees that are on approved landscape plans. So this is not a backyard tree that we're referring to. This is trees that would come through the Planning Department in some way on some kind of approved landscape plan. So as Christian mentioned at the top, like those commercial multifamily or HOA trees, or those in the public right-of-way.
Any questions pertaining to this slide?
Does the city have an arborist? Are you promoting, I mean, how large of a staff are you proposing the city has to implement this?
So that is also an implementation item in the 2016 Sustainability Plan to hire an arborist for the city. What we have now is what we would like to embed in current processes, and so that it doesn't add too much extra stress, but this is something that would help, you know, support us getting one in the future, which is, you know, the city does need one, and we do have, you know, someone who does focus on trees, but not solely.
We always look for feedback from commissions and our partners in terms of where the city should continue to grow our ranks. We do have a contracted arborist that Public Works works with currently, so we have arborist expertise access, but not a full-time arborist, so that's something we would be talking with our department colleagues about.
If you take this seriously, you need staff. You can't, and I'm looking at the next, maybe the next page, because what we have right now doesn't protect our trees. If you call code enforcement on trees that are damaged, or, and I live along, I live in Ascena along Jean Autry, and there's a couple of areas where, and the frontage, there, it's just allowed to be terrible and it's not taken care of, you can call Public Works, you can call code enforcement 30 times and not have anybody ever answer you. And so one of the things, I don't know if you sat down with code enforcement, and I know it's changed departments or an area where it's located several times, but I don't, I don't know that this is an area that they pay any attention to in terms of approved plans when development has been approved. And walk in our shopping centers and look at the dead and dying trees and underwatered, overpruned trees in those shopping centers, and the fact that we've been able to do nothing about it means to me that we need staffing. And if you ask any person in the city about trees, the first thing they're going to say to you is, why does the shopping center, centers on Ramon look so bad? So I'm just, I'm throwing that out. I don't think you can get where you want to go without staff and without authority.
We, so actually, it's interesting that you bring up the shopping centers, because I think those are one of the reasons why we also were exploring building out an ordinance like this. So I think currently, having a clearer way to codify, potentially enforce, you know, have repercussions for having something like that where the trees are not being maintained to standard. We also agree, we've, we've had a chance to talk with our code enforcement colleagues about kind of how the tree enforcement process works now, you know, having additional arborist expertise to help them make determinations about, you know, what needs to happen with the tree, how to make those recommendations. Also, as Christian has mentioned, requiring arborist reports. So we agree that we need to make sure that we have adequately resourced this going forward. And so that's something where we're going to be doing kind of resource mapping, and as I kind of mentioned in the beginning, you know, there's a big process improvement here piece as well, which isn't in the scope of the ordinance, but is something that we would want and need to do. So I appreciate you highlighting that, and I'm, I'm sure that's a question that would also come up, you know, as we bring this back to our Sustainability Commission and anybody else looks at this. Appreciate your support on that.
Director, I'd like to put the chair's statement in the form of a question and hear from staff. It's clear that there are lots of dead and drying trees in the public right-of-way in highly visible places. I'd ask a question, is that because, and are those allowed to remain because we have a lack of staff, or is there something else that can attribute to it? Because I think typically now, when we have development agreements come through, PDDs, anything that we approve, we do require that the trees and that the landscape plan be maintained, and that doesn't happen. And so my question is, is that purely staffing, or is there something else that's creating the obstacle?
Sure, that's a great question. I appreciate you framing it that way, and thank you for the question. So I may also occasionally defer to my colleague, David, from the planning perspective on some of the aspects of enforcing approved landscape plans. As, as you all know, we, sustainability, we are dilettantes in a number of different fields, so we know a little bit about a lot of stuff, so I don't want to say anything wrong. So my understanding is that one of the reasons that that occurs is because sometimes jurisdiction can get a little confusing in certain areas. So if a tree is to get called into code enforcement, you know, figuring out whose responsibility is that tree, what does it mean to take responsibility for that tree? Is that tree actively a threat to public safety? So we do have nuisance requirements in our existing code that basically, it basically means that most of the time, our enforcement priorities around trees are probably more aligned to immediate life safety threats. So for example, is that, is there a branch that's like hanging down and it's going to drop on somebody's head or, or something like that? Because it can be a little bit difficult, I think, sometimes just from an enforcement perspective, to know what is the action that needs to be recommended for that particular tree. So I think having arborist expertise or requiring a report as part of a code enforcement action could be something that would help there. I think, maybe I'll defer to David in terms of your experience with enforcement of approved landscape plans. I could, I can try to summarize based on what I've heard from you guys, but I think better from you.
I think, yeah, there's a few things that come into play. Our current property maintenance standard ordinance is very broad and very general. It refers to maintaining landscaping in a healthy condition, and then has some additional criteria here, but it's, it can be subjective. With, I think, a tree ordinance, that we have more specificity on what people can and can't do. You know, topping, I think, is a, is an item that is in here. Other things that you could do to impair a tree's growth would be addressed in the ordinance potentially. So it's partially that, and then also, we just have some older developments where it's hard to find old landscape plans. And in those cases, you know, over time, it just, some of those files are, when you've got a 50-year-old development, we may not have those records anymore. Time goes on, and we, the trees get pruned or chopped down, and people don't notice until someone calls us and says, hey, someone took down this tree, and we don't know about it until it's already gone, or. So it also becomes, you know, how do you, you know, I think an ordinance would help us with more specificity on what property owners are allowed to do and not allowed to do, especially considering how broad our current maintenance ordinance is when it comes to landscaping. And so I think part of that, in, when going back to this question about enforcement, well, is it a life safety issue? Is there, is it a fire hazard? Some of those questions are, you know, probably the more imminent ones that we deal with when we only have a limited staff to handle the, probably the number of calls that we get in a day, so.
The Palo Alto ordinance was pretty specific on, on pruning, on best practices for irrigation, which I think when people say landscape maintenance and tree maintenance, that's drip wells for trees, it's probably three watering areas for a tree, it's making sure the landscape is shaped in a way that the water drips into the, into the tree, and then pruning. And pruning is a problem both privately and publicly. Our median trees are often trimmed to accommodate truck height and nothing else. And if you drive, drive down Jean Autry and look at the way they're trimmed, it, it has nothing to do with urban, urban landscape or shade cover or anything else, but, but cars passing. So I think standards, and standards for when you can trim, and we've got, I know you mention eggs, but birds fly, birds are nesting through the end of July, and standards for when you can trim a tree, if you trim it, do you have to stop if there's a nest? Or do you only, are you only allowed to start once, once the nesting season is over? And I think that's a standard that came from Oswett. They've actually educated me, because I'm on the Landscape Committee at Ascena, but we've, we've changed our entire schedules for tree trimming, and we trim about 1,000 trees a year to accommodate the birds. So I think, I think standards, and I really liked Palo Alto for what they did in terms of writing standards in.
And I think that's, there's, you know, there's, there's different theories of legislative drafting, so we've also been working with PB&amp;K colleagues on how to do this, as to how specific you get in the ordinance, what goes in the ordinance and what goes in a guideline. We'd be happy to receive direction from this commission if you think that, you know, we definitely need to put certain aspects of a standard into a future ordinance, that, you know, we'll, we'll take that back as an action item, and you would see that reflected in a future draft.
Both Palo Alto and Santa Monica had technical landscape manuals where they mentioned the items, but then referred to the manuals for specifics. So I think there's, there are ways of drafting it. I liked both of those because you could give the technical manual to your, your gardener or your landscape company, where you might not give them the ordinance.
I agree that it's most appropriate to not put the technical species of trees, not put the technical irrigation requirements or anything else like that in the ordinance, because these things change over time. We get new invasive species, and ones that fell out of favor previously are now determined to be more appropriate for the desert. The best practices for irrigation changes. One year, we're going into netaphum everywhere, and one year, it's the deep watering, and then we go the shrub heads, and, and those change. So if we can keep the technical information either in the form of workbooks that we are staffed to keep current, that can be passed out to people, or in some other way that does not have to go back for an ordinance and be reread twice, I think there's a greater likelihood that the information will be valuable and followed.
Madam Chair, just, we're past our six o'clock timeframe, so-
I think we're going to go forward with this as long as, until they finish their ordinance. We only have one item this evening.
Thank you for the feedback. I'll continue to the next slide. So we would also establish a requirement for replacing trees removed. So the formula that was recommended was a two-to-one, two trees for everyone removed, and then, you know, a three-to-one ratio for trees, like specimen trees or those with major significance. And then this would just establish an authorization process for, you know, replacing trees that are going to be removed.
I, I would suggest that we don't do a quantity of trees for replacement, but we instead base it on canopy of a mature tree, because you can put three palms and still not, in the place of one canopy tree, and still not provide the same environmental benefits that we're looking for.
Okay, so here, we kind of break down city roles and responsibilities. So, you know, Public Works has authority over public trees, so they would be responsible for the care, maintenance, removal, and replacement of public trees that are listed before, you know, in parks, medians, and parkways, and public properties. And then Planning would oversee, you know, the trees that are on, you know, privately-owned properties that are subject to an approved landscape plan. So they would kind of be, you know, approving the removal and/or replacement of those trees on those privately-owned properties that are subject to landscape plans. And then Code Enforcement would be the ones enforcing, you know, these violations, which they already, you know, are supposed to enforce the public nuisance ordinance that we have currently.
Has there been any discussion with the tribe to coordinate efforts since they're 50% of the city? Also, it doesn't benefit us if we don't involve them.
Not yet, but they're on our list. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree. We definitely need to make sure that we're all, all of our large land stewards are coordinated here. Agreed.
Going back to Public Works, there has to be some procedure for removing a tree so that a staff person, or a subcontractor, or contractor, doesn't come in and remove trees in the way the palms were removed a few years ago. So, I think, when you're looking at areas, I think you need to figure out if the approval to remove a tree has to be signed off by the planning director, or the assistant planning director? Does removing of city trees need to be signed off by the city manager? I mean, where does, where, where do you put that authority, so that the, there isn't an easy, you know, an accidental removal of trees?
So, as it's written in the draft, it would be the director or their designee, either the Public Works director or their designee, or the planning director or their designee. But we could also look at the city manager if that would, there were some other cities that did have that as their, you know, kind of written authority.
Well, that, if you start removing city trees, you've got the whole council involved. You may want to look at the city manager in that situation.
And we also have seen other examples of ordinances that include removal of trees only after, you know, an arborist's report.
Right. And then, you want to look at what criteria is for the removal. Are you looking at a removal because you're adding pickle, you're adding a public good, you're adding pickleball courts, or say, maybe, hopefully, new northside city pool? And then, how do you, how do you balance, how do you balance public good? Because there's good in the canopy, as well as in the new, the new installation. Other comments?
I have...
Yeah, oh, please, yeah, you should have just been interfering and asking questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments or questions. Well, I appreciate that, first of all, that the city is undertaking this. It's a huge enterprise, and so important to the well-being of the city in a number of ways. I think an effective ordinance has to state when and why tree trimming is required, and when it is not really required. I think what I see around the city a lot is trees that have been put in the wrong spot for their size, and hence, they've sort of been forced into being inappropriately pruned. And I think we need to catch that, nip that in the bud at the time that the landscape plan comes through the process. And I think with an ordinance, we can perhaps have a little bit more teeth behind questioning certain plant selections on a landscape plan. But I think it's important to let people know, they don't necessarily have to trim the tree. Let a tree be a tree. I think there's got to be the encouragement of that, and again, that goes hand-in-hand with proper siding to begin with. But for, too many times, I see trees that don't need to be trimmed, that are trimmed. Because, why? So-and-so heard that this is what they did for the last 20 years, and we've got this, you know, onboard landscape company that maintains our trees, so they're on this yearly annual training, and they don't need to, trimming, and they don't need to be. So, I don't know how we can kind of build that into an ordinance, because it's kind of just an educational step, but I think it's so important, because so many trees are trimmed, and they don't need to be.
Raises another issue, going back to gardeners, leaf blowers as well, since we're still having issues with that. Is it possible to say, post something as a YouTube video in English and Spanish, to provide information for our gardeners that may not necessarily live in Palm Springs, to educate them on the leaf blowers, and give them all the information they need at one place? I think people are more likely to watch a YouTube video than to see anything you send to them in the mail.
So, we've recently welcomed our new program coordinator focused on outreach and engagement, who, as one of their first tasks, is going to be looking at really flooding the zone with information about leaf blowers, and we can also include best tree management practices there. So, that's definitely something that's on our near-term roadmap.
Yeah, this expands on the comments by Commissioner Scott, and about education. And I think really, there should be some, I don't know if it's officially part of the ordinance, but it certainly should be a program, whether it's manuals, or pamphlets, or classes, or something, because there's a lot of people, a lot of gardeners and landscape maintenance companies that really are operating by the seat of their pants, and they don't really have the right information. And so, I think there needs to be some sort of education program that's part of this ordinance.
Commissioner Murphy?
That's one of my biggest concerns, is that, you know, at the risk of getting into over government overreach, I'm skeptical that a lot of these subcontractors, and contractors, and certainly personal gardeners are going to, you know, modify their behaviors or their schedules in order to not prune during nesting season, and so forth. I was also really taken by the report from Oswett, and have toured a couple of the Oswett Trust properties, and so, I just want to make that comment, that I'd prefer it to see the ordinance and guidelines go as far as possible. And with that note, I'd like to ask what your impressions are of the report and letter that came from Oswett.
So, I'll be honest, it was Earth Day on Monday, and it's been a real busy week for our department, so we haven't spent a whole lot of time with the report from Oswett yet, but we do plan to over the next couple of weeks. We've also met with their team, and they've been getting us up to speed on that as well. So, it's definitely something we'll thoroughly evaluate and look to incorporate. We just, unfortunately, haven't had a ton of time to spend the time with it yet that I'd like to.
I just don't think self-policing is really going to be that effective. I don't think they have the right incentives, and maybe, to your point about education, if there's a way to offer some incentives for some of these, especially older HOAs, to, you know, not prune during certain times, and prune in different ways, and water in different ways, that would probably be helpful.
I have a couple of suggestions. The first is a follow-up on education, and I know Director McCoy is relatively new to the valley. You may or may not be aware that a number of years ago, 10, 15 years ago, SEVAG undertook a program to educate gardeners and landscape maintenance people regarding scalping, scalping and overseeding. It was a real problem with air quality. It's still a problem with air quality, but it has improved enormously. And our commissioners are right to point out that it's a difficult demographic to reach. Many of the people who are employed in the landscape industry are not formally educated or trained, they're working all day in the field, they don't have time to go watch informative videos, or go to SEVAG. I believe they actually made it so that some valley cities could tie the renewal of business license for landscape maintenance companies into attending and, and getting certified, or at least attending and passing the training that was offered by SEVAG. So, you might check with SEVAG and see what secrets they could share from what they do. Secondly, one of my concerns, especially if we're trying to focus on the public trees as defined by cities that are in the city's tree inventory, these are the ones in the public right-of-way, and in public lands that we own, is that so much of the work that is done, contract work for governmental agencies are awarded to low bid. And we have ordinances written to assure that the public gets their best value for the dollar, and that's usually low bid. Landscape services and tree maintenance services are just absolutely critical on the people executing the work, and in my opinion, should not be awarded on a low bid basis. A number of years ago, every time there would be a windstorm in Palm Springs, you could go count the trees that were down in the Mizell parking lot, you could count all the trees that were down by the library, and these were great big, huge trees that had just been poorly pruned over the years, that makes them weak, susceptible to wind and rain, and we would lose enormous numbers of trees. We don't have that problem as much anymore. We happen to have onboard now some excellent, very qualified landscape arborists, who oversee the work of the crews who are actually doing the pruning. So, we've made good progress, I think, in our maintenance, but it's really critical that the, in my opinion, it's really critical that we not just award to low bid contractor, if we could work with our legal counsel, and the procurement department, to make sure that we're basing our selection on qualifications first and price second. And the city council needs to be prepared to spend at least 50% more for going for qualifications, rather than just low bid. So, they have to be sure in their hearts and minds and pocketbook that this is the road that they want to go down. And then, finally, for code enforcement, I see there's asterisk in small font, enforcing trees deemed to be a public nuisance. I would argue that there are a lot of dead trees out there. A good example is dead-headed palms. They're not a public nuisance, they're not going to fall, there's no head left, there's nothing to blow over, there's nothing, but they are unsightly, and they need to, and they're not providing shade, they're not doing anything that is environmentally sustaining. Yeah, they need to be removed, and if we are going down the road of requiring that private property owners, and even that the public, actually maintain their trees to give us the canopy that we're looking at, and to give us environmental benefits, we can't just be looking at trees that are deemed to be a public nuisance. The downside, of course, of this, is that it takes a whole lot more staff to go out there, and then try, try to enforce those. But that would be my suggestion. And then, finally, one of the things, well, two final things. One is, if people get really emotionally attached to landscape and to trees, and it's been my experience that when people are emotionally attached to things, and the government tries to tell them what to do with them, they come back and sue, and it can be litigation, it can be a bit of a nightmare, so we need to be prepared for that. For somebody coming and telling us, you either have to prune your tree, or you don't have to prune it, and here's how you have to do it. When it shades my dining room just the way I want it to, and I don't want to touch it, people get combative, we'll say, over it. And so, I think it's important to be able to reach people and engage them, and to make, really make sure that we want to go down this path before we do. Otherwise, if it's too much, if we get too much blowback from the public, we're not going to be able to enforce it, because there's no way that we will be staffed and prepared to do that. And one of the segments of the public that is very concerned about these, and I understand the reasoning, is going to be the business sector. And primarily because, I'm looking at Commissioner Miller, because I'm sure he's been down this road, businesses want their signs to be visible, they want to be visible. And anytime a tree that you plant young, when you do the development, starts growing up, to interfere with the signage, it's going to get topped. And businesses will fight adamantly, and they will come out in the, I've seen businesses that come out in the dead of night and remove trees, and then don't know the next morning where they went, but suddenly, you can see their signage in their building, and they're very happy about that. So, we need to make sure we have, take into consideration some of the concerns that business owners will have. If we want them to plant trees, and to maintain the trees in their parking lots, we need to figure out how to do that such that they are still visible to the public, whether it's starting with a more larger, more mature tree that has grown above the signage zone, or I don't know what. But, but we need to be thinking of that, because it will be an issue.
Commissioner Murphy?
I have one more comment about, have you guys heard of Friends of the Urban Forest up in San Francisco? That would be an organization that you'd want to pay attention to. It's a little, it's really a public-private partnership, and one of the things about this plan, that it would be, I think, beneficial for the whole community and the valley, if there was a way of incentivizing homeowners to plant more trees. There's a lot, I mean, we're just talking about HOAs, and Friends of the Urban Forest has planted, I don't know what the number is now, but it's, it's well over a million trees in the city of San Francisco. And it's, it's been a very successful model. So, I'd encourage you guys to take a look at that organization, and see if there is a way for us to loop in private residential, in incentivizing these property owners to plant trees, certain types of trees.
One of the areas that this doesn't cover, but we hopefully will cover when we get to the zoning update, is the private trees in the right-of-way, and requirements for them, maintenance requirements, tree density, tree canopy, because we don't have specific enough requirements right now, that if we don't add them to every development, we don't have a tree canopy people can walk under, or will be able to walk under in 20 years, and walk in shade. So, that, I think, I know you can't do everything in this, and that's something we need to do when we get to zoning update, but it's, I think it's critical if we're going to reduce urban heat and help people walk, to walk in our city, or at least use the outside and use their cars less.
Has there been any communication with the nurseries, Lowe's, Home Depot, and I forget the name of the one, in Palm Desert, to provide them with the information of what are the best things to plant, what, what subspecies, even just shrubs? Because as a homeowner, I walk into Lowe's and think, oh, this looks good. But I have no idea whether this is a drought-tolerant plant, if there were more information available to, on the, on the purchaser level, that might be of some assistance as well.
And they often, the, the starting point is, where do they grow their plants? If they're growing their plants on the coast, and they're shipping them here, they're not going to live, they're not going to live. And that'll happen with trees, and so, your better landscapers know where to buy plants that will survive, and know which ones have been grown in the valley, but that, I think getting Lowe's to buy their, buy their plants...
Well, they don't have an option.
So, so Christian's also working on some kind of like, like a sort of a technical manual, basically modeled off of what Palm Desert has for a technical tree manual, so thanks to Commissioner Allen's colleagues there, and Pastor there. But, so that's something, currently, we point people toward the Lush &amp; Efficient manual from Coachella Valley Water District, but it's not super-specific necessarily. It does give good general guidance on, on what would work, but that's something where we would hope to reach out more to some of those larger stores, and hope, hope they're receptive. Definitely the smaller ones in the area have been pretty receptive to this kind of thing.
We've only used Lush &amp; Efficient for about maximum 10 years, maybe eight years, in our planning requirements, but that isn't updated as much to what's not, what you can't grow in the valley anymore. And so, we may also need to improve what we're requiring for new developments, and it's easy to use Lush &amp; Efficient, but it, some of the plants won't survive anymore. So, and, I mean, it goes to everything, it goes to, the one thing that, I live in an area where there's wind, so what trees we plant in the windy area, it's, sometimes it isn't just letting the canopy grow, you've got to, you've got to figure out how to thin the trees without, and not destroy the canopy, but not over-prune, so that they can survive the wind. And I think that's also something that goes, needs to go in the technical manuals. And in every windstorm, we lose at least one, if not three, heritage palaverdis that have been appropriately pruned. I think, any, any other comments? Thank you, get to work.
Thank you all so much for the feedback. Well, we really appreciate it. Well, we really appreciate it.
Okay, does anybody need a break before we start the second part of the meeting? Nope, okay. We are now opening the six o'clock regular planning commission meeting. And can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Vice Chair Alain.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Can I have a report in the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The agenda was available for public access at the City Hall Exterior Bulletin Board and the Planning Services Department by 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 18th. This meeting has been posted in accordance with state law and local policies.
Okay, thank you. And can I have a motion to accept the agenda or any changes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is time for public comment. This has been set aside for members of the public to address the planning commission. We, please note that we're prohibited from taking action on items that are not listed in the posted agenda. If members of the public would like to comment on the items in this agenda, they should do it in this portion of the meeting. So if somebody is here to talk about the consent calendar, oh, I'm sorry, they can, it is, the other item is a public hearing item. Am I, okay. So you can talk on the one item that's before us at this portion of the meeting or when we call that item. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
No requests to speak, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are at the consent calendar. We have one item, which is the approval of the minutes of April 10th, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Chair Wermick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to the public hearing item. It is a request by Gillespie Competitory, I'm not sure, Competory, on behalf of Dogs Are Rope, Dogs Are Dope LLC, love the name, for a conditional use permit to incorporate overnight kennels within an existing dog training and care facility at 888 East Research Drive, Zone M1P. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The property is located within an existing multi-tenant building in the M1P Planning, Research and Development Park Zone. The M1P Zone allows uses in the M1 Zone, including conditionally permitted uses such as overnight dog kennels. The area, the subject site is located within the general plan designation industrial and is adjacent to other industrial uses such as the Palm Springs Airport and a previously approved storage facility that will be located just to the west of the project site. A little bit of background, Dogs Are Dope is an existing dog care facility. This is a permitted use by right. They opened their doors at the beginning of 2024. However, a conditional use permit is required for overnight boarding services. The hours of operation are 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 PM. The facility offers indoor recreation only with training and enrichment activities. There are currently 27 kennels located within the facility to provide an area for dogs to rest between play. Should the conditional use permit application be approved, these same kennels will be used for boarding. So this is an existing site plan of the project site. It has an established parking lot, sufficient number of parking spaces, two trash enclosures, an established sidewalk, curb and gutter, and currently working on, sorry, they're currently working on the landscape area. Dogs Are Dope occupied two suites, Suite 100 and 101. The remainder of the building is utilized as storage and warehouse space for other tenants. The interior floor plan consists of a lobby, a prep and storage area for dog food and cleaning supplies, a 700 square foot enrichment area where the nine 3x5 kennels and 14 3x4 kennels will be located, and a 600 square foot training area. The applicant utilizes cleaning products made specifically for pet care. They are non-toxic odor eliminators and disinfectants. The photo on the bottom is an artificial turf area for dogs to use as the restroom. Dog waste is disposed one of two ways. It can either be picked up and flushed down the toilet or it can be picked up, wrapped, and thrown into the trash. Staff has discussed the issue of dog waste with the city's wastewater treatment plant. They've expressed no issues with the way the facility is disposing of animal waste. Furthermore, what's not shown on the floor plan are two existing outdoor courtyard spaces that are connected to this facility. They're starred, the stars are kind of hard to see, but you can see them. They're starred in the photo above. So the star at the very top is indicating the first outdoor courtyard area. It's not currently in use. However, the applicant does have plans to incorporate this area into their business eventually. The second star, so the one in the lower half, is indicating the second courtyard, which actually is being used and available to all dogs. However, it's mainly used for private dog care. So if a dog isn't as socially, isn't as social as all the other dogs and they require, you know, just, you know, a little bit less activity and energy going around them, that they use this area to use the restroom. So there are five findings that need to be met for a conditional use permit. Staff has reviewed and analyzed these findings within the staff report and found that all findings have been met. Staff is recommending approval subject to the attached conditions of approval. That concludes my report. Staff is available for any questions and the applicant is also available as well.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Murphy?
I have a question about, I guess this would be to the applicant, about do dogs in your care, do they get outside at all during the course of the day?
I think, let's, we're still at staff, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll open this up to the applicant later. If staff can't answer that, we'll do that later.
I will defer that question to the applicant.
Other questions? Commissioner Alain?
I have a question on, one of the required findings is that the use is not detrimental to the existing uses or the future uses specifically permitted in the zone. So I understand that staff has taken a look at the existing uses and said that this doesn't conflict with them. But I'm wondering what the other, what are the uses that are allowed by right that could come in so that we can determine whether or not we think there's potentially a conflict?
So I don't have a list of those uses, but in the M1 Zone, it's more, it's very industrial uses. Maybe David has more.
Yeah, I have the list here, so I can just list off some of the other uses permitted. In terms of services that are permitted by right, animal daycare, athletic and health clubs, automobile sales agencies with certain qualifiers, banks and financial institutions, blueprinting and photocopying, catering, childcare centers, governmental facilities, offices, off-street parking, newspaper publishing, printing, lithographing and publishing, restaurants, and radio and television broadcasting. It does permit cannabis lounge and dispensaries, religious institutions, wholesaling and warehousing. So those are the, generally the list of permissible uses by right in this zone.
Dance, dance and schools, you've had, we have that in that facility, in that park.
Correct.
So we have to envision that a restaurant could come in or a health club could come in or daycare and be right next door. And we need to make sure that we condition this such that it would not cause a problem for them. Okay.
I have questions, and there are a couple. We, we in the past have turned down overnight because of the absence of outdoor space and a planned outdoor space. And actually, it's interesting to hear you have it because it wasn't listed in the staff report and that the pictures and that listing would have been helpful to have. But I want to be consistent in what we do, even though I know that was for the downtown. It was an existing day boarding facility that wanted to board at night and they had no access to outs, they had no outside space for the dogs. I know that it's, you can do this as of right, but what I'm concerned about is the absence of standards. I didn't see how much space each dog gets. I didn't see separate areas for dogs that are shy and dogs that can be in a public space. I have concerns about dogs, and I know I wouldn't put my dog in a space where activity, where there was no space where she could sleep, but she was watching other dogs play with an open space and no quiet space. So I'm, I'm just wondering, and I didn't see standards for noise. I didn't see standards for sanitation. I didn't see requirements as to how the dogs are walked outside, if they are. And so I don't feel like we have either conditions or analysis here that gives me the basis to say yes or no. And I'm cautioned by the fact that we've said no in the past to the absence of outdoor space. So I'm, maybe this is for Mr. Newell. Do we send this back with a list of questions?
The commission certainly could, after opening and closing the hearing, take that motion. Part of the lack of requirements that we have in our conditions is we don't really have anything in our local ordinances that specify standards or criteria. There is certainly discretion of the commission to add additional conditions if there's certain things that are relevant to responding to findings. As Vice Chair Alain has mentioned, other potential uses that may come into this facility or adjacent sites. So there's leeway there for the commission to add conditions if they so choose in response to findings.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I was going to say, I too noted the lack of outdoor space, and I think that's something that we need to push for, realizing that there aren't any specific standards for dog boarding in the Palm Springs code. But I think we could come up with something. And I don't know if we, I think we want to hear from the applicant first, certainly to see what your intent is with the outdoor spaces that you are going to provide. And I think then we need to determine, does that sound reasonable or not? I think it's imperative that they have outdoor space and that they provide, as Chair mentioned, separation for smaller dogs or larger dogs and shyer dogs. I had a bad experience with a dog boarding facility when I lived in San Francisco 15 years ago or more. And I had a small dog at the, being boarded, and it lost an eye from interacting with a large dog. And the large dog was playing, but it resulted in my dog losing one of his two eyes. So there's a real important need to separate appropriate sized dogs and make sure they're being monitored all the time.
Other comments before we call the, open the public hearing? The public hearing at this point is open. You have 10 minutes to present. And if there are no other members of the public that are here, please stay. There would normally be rebuttal, but I know that there are questions.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Support Staff. I'm Giuseppe Comparatori, co-founder of Dogs Are Dope, a premier pet care facility located in Palm Springs. Alongside my wife, I have dedicated the past several years to establish a growing and growing our business. Over the course of five years, we have cultivated a loyal client base, even amidst challenging global circumstances. This loyalty, we believe, is rooted in our fundamental philosophy. A content, a content dog equates a content owner. Our commitment to enhancing both our business and our community has driven us to acquire extensive knowledge in canine behavior, breed-specific needs and nutritional requirements, setting our services apart in the Coachella Valley. At Dogs Are Dope, we offer more than mere supervision. We provide a holistic approach to care, ensuring each dog receives tailored nutrition, safety, most importantly, rest and engaging activities. Our unique approach has resulted in the noticeable enthusiasm and anticipation among our dogs in care. That sentiment is mirrored by their owners who recognize the exceptional level of service we provide. Consistency is crucial to a dog's well-being, akin to the stability of a child that they require. Thus, we are committed to maintaining a high standard of care for all dogs that visit our facility, ensuring that they receive the same outstanding treatment consistently. Our facility boasts the finest, most hygienic dog suites in the industry, complemented by round-the-clock supervision to ensure peace of mind, particularly during nighttime when dogs are resting. Our dedication to excellence is unwavering, underscored by our initial motivation to relocate here with the ambition of creating employment opportunities for the residents of the Coachella Valley. We are enthusiastic about the, sorry, about the prospect of further contribution to the local economy, not only by offering jobs, but fostering careers. We are requesting the opportunity for the dogs who frequent Dogs Are Dope to have the same consistent experience that other dogs in Palm Springs have by boarding at their chosen daycare facility. We are keen to continue this journey of growth and community contribution, and we invite you to support us in our endeavor to provide unparalleled pet care services. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Okay, well, we have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Why don't you start with talking about what areas you have and how you separate out, and if you separate out, large and small dogs, and how you would protect the dogs to prevent the kind of accidental aggression that could happen based on size or temperament?
Absolutely. First and foremost, our groups are very small. We don't have 50, 60, 70, 80 dogs in daycare at the same time. That's just a recipe for disaster. You can't, you can't staff enough to monitor that much body language. As I said, we specialize in behavior. We are trained to observe body language in order to dictate whether a dog needs a break or whether the dog can continue play, whether that be a large, small, medium dog. The way we tailor our groups is by energy levels, by demeanor, and by, I guess, by their play style, right? I'm not going to put a five-pound Chihuahua in a room with a 100-pound Mastiff that is rambunctious because it's still a puppy. That would just be irresponsible of me and my staff. But we tailor these groups accordingly. Yes, we do have small dogs mixed with large dogs, but we pair them up accordingly to their play styles. I'm not going to put very rambunctious dogs with dogs that like to just hang out, right? We also ensure that our dogs get plenty of rest throughout the day. Rest is very crucial when it comes to socializing your pets and to their well-being. Overstimulating a dog can lead to reactivity, aggression, things that your dog might not necessarily be prone to. But when they're tired, exhausted, lack rest, these behaviors can come out unwillingly. can come out unwillingly, especially when they have a dog that is overinvasive in their Myself and my, my staff are trained in order to see these signs ahead of it. We're very proactive and not reactive. Hope that answers your question.
So what I don't see are several spaces. So how do you do that? Because you, you don't have, you have one main room.
So we have two.
And then a training area.
That's correct. So our training area, we use for our, as the staff member said before, we have dogs that aren't well-suited for it. And we, we establish this through a four-hour assessment. Every single dog that comes within our care goes through a four-hour assessment before we even take them on. And there are occasions that we turn dogs away because they're just not a good fit and we might not be a good fit for them. And that's okay. I'm not here to, to try to take as much business as I can. I'm here to be.
Let me, let me just add, because I really, I'm going to space. You've got the one main area which looks like you've got about 25 feet per dog for, if you had 27 dogs in there. And then you have a training area and then you have an outside area that you use, but I'm assuming you can't put the dogs in the outside area when it's 117 degrees or 125 degrees?
Yeah, that would be the likelihood with any outdoor area, especially if it's turf.
Right, so that you can only use it in the summertime, it's not as usable unless you've shaded it.
Which is why we, we optimized our indoor space so that it's air-conditioned. Majority of the clients that we get, their first comment is, is your space air-conditioned? People don't want their dogs outside in 100-plus degree weather.
Yeah.
It's not fair to the dog. They don't even want to be outside. If I was to give the option to a dog to have a space that is unbroken between an outside area, even if it's shaded in an inside air-conditioned area, nine times out of 10, the dogs can be found inside. What makes us different from your glorified dog park, as I like to call them, we specialize in proper stimulation. Proper stimulation not necessarily meaning, hey, I'm gonna run your dog for three hours or eight hours and then it's gonna be tired when it goes home. I'm talking about proper stimulation up here. Dogs thrive when they are stimulated appropriately through scent games, through enrichment activities, also through proper socialization, right? We cater our groups to being smaller. Our groups are always less than 20 dogs. And that's why we can operate the way that we do because we put them on rotation. If we see a dog that requires, requires rest, we give them rest. Don't have just an open daycare setting where the dogs are laying on top of each other with not enough room to rest. Have separate areas for that, being their suites, right? You can see, you saw them in that photo. They're within the space, but because of the way that we operate, the dogs take the time to rest when given. A typical dog needs anywhere between 12 to 14 hours of rest a day. XL breeds upwards of 18. Facilities that run their dogs 10 hours a day in a social setting, in my opinion, aren't doing it the right way. They're doing a disservice to their clients and the dogs that they have in their care, which is why we came up with our, our business. We always do what's right for the dog.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the, the effort you're putting into the training and daycare areas, but now we're talking about an overnight stay and potentially it could be a week or two weeks or more that the owners are essentially putting their dog in your hands for continual 24-hour periods. So I think, to me anyway, that really intensifies the need to have some sort of outdoor activity space and some sort of protocols that your employees use to give at least a minimal amount of outdoor space. And I would say even in the summer, again, 24 hours and somebody's gonna be there, that might be before 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. and it might be after 8:00 p.m. But again, because this is gonna be staffed 24 hours, I think there needs to be something built in that gives the opportunity for those dogs to have at least a minimal amount of outdoor space if they're staying at least 24 hours. And I've, when we're at that point, again, depending on the comfort level of the commission to move this forward, I've got some suggestions to kind of craft some conditions if we were gonna go that route.
Chair Murphy, you had questions?
Yeah, I had a question. I guess I was asking or about to ask about walking the dogs outside because the, there's nothing you can do about, this is where your business is located. And there is very limited outside space. That one patio that isn't being used is very, very small and the one that is being used, I didn't get a chance to really look at it, but it doesn't, still doesn't look very big. So that's why I was asking the question about walking the dogs. Do they get walked at all?
Yeah, as weather permitting, we have the option for the owners to, if, if they want us to walk their dogs, yes.
And where do you, where do you actually walk them along?
We can walk them around the, around the facility. The parking lot is very large. At the end of the day, I guess it, it comes down to what exactly are, are you looking for as far as the dogs needing to be outside in order to be properly stimulated and fulfilled biologically?
I've just, my understanding of the nature of dogs is that they, they do like and need some kind of outdoor activity, just for basic dog behavior, sniffing. So, so in, in that area doesn't really lend itself well that, to, to dog walking. So that's why I was just curious if you, if you do walk dogs and if you do, where do you actually walk them? So it's just around the building?
Yeah, it would be around the area. Now, to speak, to speak to your comment about, about them sniffing, that would be where our enrichment aspect would come into play. There's various different ways that you can engage a dog's nose that would be far more tiresome because you're forcing them to think rather than giving them a physical exertion. But it really all depends on, on where you're coming from and how extensive, I guess, the knowledge behind it is, right?
Okay. I've never owned a dog, so I'm not really an animal person. Yeah, sorry, shoot me.
It's not for everybody.
Nor a cat. But anyway, he does me. My question's on staffing.
Yes.
Can you explain to us the number of staff? There was something about nursing students I read.
The reason why that was in the report was we were at the College of the Desert and we bumped into the head of the nursing department. And she asked why we were there and we were out handing out flyers for hiring. And because of our nighttime, you know, once the dogs go down and they're in their suites and it's lights out, they're sleeping, right? There's no need to disturb them. So it's really just a matter of having somebody on-site in case there is an emergency or in case there is a dog in distress, right? Doesn't usually happen, but it can and we need to plan for the worst-case scenario. And she had mentioned that the hours worked very, very well for her nursing staff, for her nursing students. So it was just something that we put in there because somebody, somebody had, had mentioned that it would work very well for their students.
So what's the ratio of adults, I mean adults, of human supervisors to pets?
During the day, during daily operations, it would be one dog, one, one team member per 12 dogs.
And just one person's there?
Overnight.
What is your night, what are, so what do you consider overnight? Is that from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.?
Overnight is just. Yes.
So that person's working a 12-hour shift or they're two shifts?
It would be two shifts.
Just to kind of, you, you had asked what, what you'd be looking, what we would be looking for, why the reason for the outdoor space. And I appreciate the nighttime and, because my dog actually sleeps throughout the night from at least 8:00 p.m. to, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. And I appreciate the fact that dogs, when they feel comfortable in their environment, they will sleep through the night. But my dog, as well as I think every one of your clients' dogs, don't then get up and pee and poop inside a building. They go out to do their business. And I think that's part of providing appropriate care when we're talking about more than 24-hour care. We're, again, I'm not speaking to your by right use and I think you're doing probably a great job at the daycare and the training and such for the daytime, but we're talking about dogs that are staying more than 24 hours and likely could be five days, seven days, 14 days, whatever. If their parents are taking a cruise, you know, to Europe, it might be three or four weeks. So I think, don't dismiss the concern that we have for outdoor space because those of us that have dogs know that they don't get up and sit inside all day. They go out and do their business and then they come in, especially if it is 90, 100, 110 degrees. But we provide a space for them as loving pet owners, for them to go outside, even if, for me anyway, even if they have to go outside the unlikely time at 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon, I put them out a door in our house that has a shade tree next to it so that they can go out and do their business on shade and they don't have to walk on the 150-degree, you know, concrete or pavement. So I think it's imperative that there is outdoor space that is usable and provided for your overnight guests.
Can I speak to that comment?
I think that might have been a comment. I, I think there are probably more questions for you and we're beginning to get into comments, which I want to hold us back from. But I'm looking at feeding, you're gonna be feeding dogs that are staying overnight. What kind of, you know, what I haven't seen were standards for refrigeration, an area to maintain food, food prep. Didn't, I didn't see any of those things, but being in a kennel, at least it's my dog, she's gonna tell you twice a day that she needs food and exactly what time she needs it.
So typically, majority of owners have kibble. We do have a fridge on-site that has a, that is a refrigerator and a freezer to accommodate all sorts of meals, all depending on what the owner provides. If they don't provide it, we have house food that we, that we would feed the guests. It's in that back area, which is for storage and food prep. That's where we store the dog's belongings, cleaning products, it's where we do the dishes, that's where we, that's where we'd be storing their food.
And where do you feed the dogs?
In their kennels.
And how large are the kennels?
We have various sizes. We have three by four by four, or three by five by seven. Those are our two suites at the moment.
And what happens if the dog cries all night?
If the dog cries all night?
Because you don't have a separated area, you don't have any areas where all the dogs aren't together.
That would be, well, no, they're, they're in separate suites, right? Any facility that you go to would have suites together, I guess, clarify your question.
I have, I've seen suites that are separated from the play areas, but they're not stacked and there's a, a good deal of room for the dog to walk around.
So to speak on that, when you're looking at dog psychology, not all dogs do well with vast amounts of space, okay? It cultivates anxiety in the dog because they don't know what to do with it. A lot of dogs prefer small, niche, little spaces. Giving the dog ample space to walk around, pace back and forth and, and build anxiety is not conducive to the well-being of the dog within our care, which is also another reason why we go through that during our assessment. We, we like to see whether the dog can self-soothe and whether they're, they're capable of emotionally regulating on their own, right? It's very important that the dogs not be stressed while in our care. This can lead to loose bowel movements, this can lead to dehydration, this can lead to a number, a number of, of issues that would probably condone them being picked up immediately. So like I said, we, we come from a very different approach and that's making sure that all the dogs are calm and that they can self, they, they can emotionally regulate within our care without us being by their side. As I said before, there are dogs that we turn away because it's just not a good fit.
And the other thing I didn't see were sanitation issues. Have you had, I mean, can your facilities plumbing, can it accommodate all the dog waste you're throwing down it?
Yeah, so it doesn't necess, it doesn't go through a toilet per se. We have a designated mop sink that we dump the fecal matter into and I'm, just, we don't go around and scoop hundreds of piles and try to flush them down one shot, right? It'd be like using your common toilet at home. You're not gonna load it up and expect it to go down. You pick up the waste as it happens and you dispose of it appropriately. If waste, if we have a dog in the, in the front yard as the diagram shows and they defecate in the front, it gets picked up and thrown in the trash because it would have stones, debris possibly stuck to it. So it's not acceptable to flush that down into this plumbing system.
Okay. I think, questions?
I have questions.
Oh, Commissioner Rotman and then.
Yeah, how, how large is your outdoor space that you're currently using?
Yeah.
Approximately?
I wish I had the exact measurement. I'd say it's probably 10 by 20 feet.
Okay. And, and is it equipped right now with anything? Is it just gravel or dirt?
No, right now it's wood chips.
Wood chips?
Yes.
And then during the staff report, there were some photographs of the interior of your spaces and I, there was one photograph that I recall that had like a white wall, fence or something. Can you, can we bring that up and can you just tell me, you know, what we're looking at? Okay.
So on this, on this, on the far side, you see the suites. Those are the three by fours.
Okay.
Okay, they're double stacked, they're four feet high, three feet wide, or sorry, three feet deep by three feet, by four feet wide. The fencing you see is to separate the staff walking area from the play space.
I see. Okay, and I can, I can relate that to the, the floor plan then.
Yeah. And then you can see on the far side, the, the turf area, which is where the dogs potty. And to speak to Commissioner Murphy's concern, when the dogs go down for their break in the middle of the day, okay, everybody goes down for a nap. It's mandatory at our facility. When we then start socializing them again, as soon as the dogs touch the turf, because it's a texture that they're used to, they potty, right? They'll either go pee or they'll go poop. Likewise, if the dog doesn't have any soft, any soft landscaping at home, they'll poop on the rubber because they're used to, they're used to concrete, right? So it's not necessarily a fact of being inside or outside. It's catering to the textures that the dog is used to for when they, for when they potty. And then to the sanitation point of, of Chair Member, sorry, Kathy, or, we have three, three key products that we use. They have been designed by people within the pet care industry and, and the pet care industry uses them a lot. They're, they're created by a company called, oh my God, I can't remember their name right now. Professional Products, Health Technologies Professional Products, okay? The main, the main cleaner that we use daily is a bioenzymatic odor digester, okay? This has been, it's a healthy bacteria that feeds on proteins and foul-smelling bacterias in order to keep the facility clean and smelling not like ammonia. That's our daily cleaner. So that's our spot cleaning that we do every day. It's what we, it's what we rinse our turf down with periodically throughout the day to ensure that the dogs aren't constantly walking on urine. Below, underneath that turf is a floor drain that is sloped. So whenever they urinate, the urine goes down into the drain. That turf is then rinsed, cleaned, and then the drain is filled with that eliminator product in order to, to promote a healthy bacteria within the, within the plumbing system. The two other products that we use, one The two other products that we use, one is called Cajun Kennel. It's a, it's a cleaner, a deodorizer, and a degreaser. And the reason why there's degreaser in it is animal coats have a lot of grease in it. Fecal matter has a lot of fat. In order to break down these products, a degreaser is used because you cannot sanitize or clean a surface with, with, we'll say, material on it, matter on it, whether it be bio or dirt. So you first need to clean the surface before you can sanitize it. The third product is called Triple Two. That is our sanitizer. That is what we clean each suite with before we put any dogs in it. Now, if a dog is to eliminate within a suite, another dog is not put in without falling, without following a very strict procedure, which is hitting it with the, the degreaser and then cleaning it with the Triple Two. We don't put any dogs in a soiled room unless that happens. If the room has not been soiled, we have very strict vaccine protocols in order to ensure that all of our pets are safe.
Thank you.
I think at this point, I'm going to close. Are you have questions?
Yes. A couple of the things that we haven't touched on are relative to how your facility might impact future users or the existing users. One would be on ventilation and airflow and circulation. Going from a 10-hour-a-day use to a 24-hour-a-day use is a much greater burden. Is your ventilation specific to your unit or is it shared ventilation with the surrounding within the building?
My specific footprint has five air handling units on the roof that are designated specifically for my use.
Okay, so it is not, you're not exhausting into other, okay. How about for the waste disposal, which again, I'm very concerned about going from the by right use of 10 hours a day to 24 hours a day and the amount of, that's a whole lot of poop, a whole lot more than you're currently handling. And especially if you're picking it up outdoors and disposing of it in the trash in the 117 degrees that we're talking about and it has to wait a week or however, how frequently is your outdoor waste picked up by the trash haulers?
Daily. So the Palm Springs disposal, I can't remember the exact name, they pick up our bins daily.
Daily. Okay, great. How about then with the plumbing system, again, and especially when you're talking about the degreaser, the amount of oil and fat that is in what's going down the drains, do you have assurance that the capacity is adequate to handle the amount of waste that will be now two and a half times what you're generating?
The amount of waste wouldn't increase, and here's why. Dogs would not be defecating at night. I can almost guarantee that because they're resting. There may be the odd one here and there. Do I think that it would double or triple? No. Nine times out of 10, the dogs that come to us in the morning for socializing in daycare, they don't potty at home, they wait to come to us to potty. Nine times out of 10, dog comes into our facility, they go on the turf and they potty immediately. So as far as there, there being a need for an overabundance of fecal matter, I don't think that that would be, it would be no, it would be no more than our daily operations and it definitely would be significantly less than, we'll say, your mall bathroom would see in a day.
But this isn't plum, this isn't plumbed to be a mall bathroom. This is plumbed to be a manufacturing space or something.
But it's, it's still, it's plumbed according with code, right? The plumbing doesn't change with the expectancy of overuse. The pee traps and, and plumbing to a toilet would be the same.
Okay. And I'm, I'm looking at my fellow dog owners here to see too, do, do we think that the dogs really wait to get there in the morning before they pee or poop or is that?
If it was my dog, she would have walked in the morning and peed and pooped and then peed to.
Mark her territory when she gets there.
To mark her territory as soon as she gets there and if she was just, and if I was picking her up the next day, she would poop in the morning there and pee up a storm because there are other dogs around. But I don't, I kinda, I kind of, I mean, if the dog's boarding, it's going to poop every day. It's a chance as to whether the dog, and it's your, you know, they're your dogs, so maybe there are 20 dogs that have been there and they're used to it. Generally, generally, my dog would poop in the morning before she went to daycare and that wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't. So I think the, the amount of dog poop probably goes up with boarding, but I, I can't, you know, I don't know every dog's habits. I just, I just know the five dogs I've had.
We talk about, we talk about some fascinating things here at the Planning Commission.
But to your, to your question, every dog is different.
Yeah.
Every dog is raised different, every dog has different circumstances, right? Luckily, your dog gets a walk in the morning. Not every dog has that privilege. Some people are in a rush, some people rush their dogs in and barely have time to say hi to us, they just drop their leash and away they go. Everything is different, right? It's very hard to generalize something because they're all individuals, right? That would be like saying like.
Yeah, I, I think all you can guarantee is if the dog's there for a week, it's going to have pooped at least six times in your facility.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and that would go the same for dogs that frequent our daycare five days a week, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, but, so I think at some point, do you have more questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. You currently have capacity for 27 dogs and, on a daily basis. And I see that it looks like from your description of what's proposed, you would have 27 boarding.
We have 27.
Up to 27 dogs boarding.
Yes.
So are you planning to change the use of your facility from daycare to boarding exclusively? Or do you see doing?
We would be, be doing both consecutively.
Okay.
So just because we have 27 suites would not be an indication of, of our capacity. That would be our capacity for boarding, right? When you have, when you have housemates, dogs from the same house, we do give the owners the opportunity to board them together. However, should we see an indication of any aggression between those housemates, they do get separated.
So, so what do you see the maximum capacity at any one time, including the boarders and the days and the roommates?
40.
40?
Absolutely.
So you're increasing, so there is, okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, she's.
Sorry, I think I had. I think I had one more. I'm, okay. So at any one time, it could be one staff member for 12 dogs, so that means that you're going to have arguably four staff members there if you're up to 40 at one time? And the overnight is just going to be a single person at any given time?
That is correct.
The walking of dogs, I, I hear you saying that they would just walk around the facility outdoors and in the parking lot. Well, the parking lot's not where you're going to walk them, I presume, when it's 117. Are you planning to use, there's open territory or open lots around you, are you planning on using any of those?
Given the landscape and some of the critters that I've seen in the open lots around us, I wouldn't put a dog on them because I would not be able to ensure that there's not a scorpion nearby that would, that would.
And, and I presume that you don't have any legal agreements or rights to use neighboring properties? So you would be, you would agree to a condition that limited you to remain with dogs at all times on the premises?
Yes.
Okay. I think that finishes my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, kind of a follow-up to the, sort of the space and the capacity issue. Other than dogs that are from the same household, I'm, what I'm hearing, I think, from you is that there'd never be a, a time when two dogs would be put in the same cage, again, unless they were from the same household.
That's correct.
And pre-authorized by the owner.
I would, even if the owners pre, even we'll say, two owners are friends and like, oh, our dogs, no.
Right, right. From the same household, right.
Same household.
And you'll still be looking for aggression potentially if.
That's correct.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Can I put one more, just say one more thing to close out my?
No.
No? Okay.
Doesn't he have a rebuttal? He's got a rebuttal period.
Well, you do have a rebuttal so you can give a speech. You've got three minutes.
Although we don't have an exterior space at the moment, it is within what we would like to do. We do already have permission by the landlord. Now, obviously, given the city and the planning, it's going to be some few, a few more hoops to jump through before we can actually establish a better outdoor area for the dogs. It is something that we are in the works of doing. Keep in mind that is going to be another sizable investment into our facility. That is going to be very hard to come up with should we not be able to board dogs as boarding is a very sizable portion of a dog facility.
So you're saying you, you have that area, but you're not authorized to use it yet by lease?
So, no, not that I'm not authorized to use it by lease. The entire front of the building, including the two courtyards, belongs to our business and we have permission to expand that courtyard area to be larger or, we'll say, create an outdoor space on the other side of it. But like I said, it's going to take some time to put together and present it in order for you, the city, to accept something on the outside of the building. So we'll say, right to the, yeah, right there. That entire front area, I, I don't know how far back we have to be from the sidewalk, but I would assume that there's definitely sufficient space there to add an outdoor yard.
Thank you. The matters before the commission, general comments before, there are specific comments. I'm going to make mine. I think we need, however we feel about this, I think we need to look at, this is not appropriately conditioned. And so I think comments in general as to where we're going to go and if there are conditions, what we should be adding. And my, what I would say to you is, this is, this is something that can be passed to another owner. So we're looking at this not as an owner who's exceedingly careful, but we want to make sure that if this facility were to be sold to somebody else, it's appropriately conditioned so that it's appro, you know, it's appropriate for the use. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I, like I had mentioned earlier, I appreciate hearing from the applicant and it sounds like a, you know, a very legitimate and, you know, very nice place. But I think we, as I mentioned, we need to put in some conditions. And I've got a few conditions that I think would go a long way and then we can decide if that's enough or do we need a study session or what. I mean, I, I think, I feel like we could come up with conditions that all of us dog owners and dog lovers would appreciate if we were to leave our dog at this place and perhaps many of us have left dogs at places and so we, we can know what those facilities have provided. So I'm willing to help fashion some conditions if you, you want to go forward.
I think we can fashion them and the question will be, do we fashion them or do we give them to staff to work with the applicant and bring it back? But go ahead.
Okay. So I, I think there needs to be a minimum of, and I came up with the number of 150 square feet, that's about a 15 by 10-foot area, we can certainly increase that. And it certainly sounds like the, the applicant probably has access to a larger area, so let's throw that 150 as a starting point. A minimum of 150 square feet of usable outdoor dog space shall be provided. And then along with that condition, that outdoor usable space shall be at least 50% pervious surface and more to, better if it's 100%, but at least 50% pervious, meaning it's gravel or DG or, or mulch or whatever so that the water and pee and, and anything, you know, is able to, to soak in, and must be covered by at least 50% shade. So if that's not provided by existing or future trees, then it's got to be provided by a, an awning or a canopy structure to provide shade for the outdoor space. And then a further condition would be every dog that is held overnight shall be provided with at least two outdoor visits per 24-hour period, and those outdoor visits must be a minimum of 10 minutes each. So that at least is providing, I think, a bare bones kind of conditions about the operation of the outdoor space and the outdoor needs of the dog from our, our perspective, again, knowing that we don't have specific criteria in the code. I think that's all we can rely on at this point to come up with some.
But doesn't that exceed the purview of this commission? We're like creating, this is something city council should address.
Well, it should, but.
But we're creating.
But we don't have that, so look at.
By telling them you need to take the dog out how many times a day?
Look at criteria number three.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can disagree, but look at criteria number three.
I left my.
The site isn't, and for the intended use, is adequate in size and shape to accommodate such use, including yards, setbacks, walls or fences, landscaping and other features required in order to adjust such use to those existing or permitted future uses of land in the neighborhood. So I think we've got the teeth to do that and I think we're remiss if we don't do something.
Well, I don't think we can tell them how, how often they need to take the dogs out. We're not the experts on that.
We're doing, we, we basically are doing a discretionary permit, so we do have some authority and our attorney can speak to that.
Yeah, that's right, Madam Chair of Commissioners. There's obviously five conditions in the resolution for you to approve a conditional use permit. And number three, as the commissioner stated, does ask the commission to look at the intended use and the adequacy of size of the building. So that is one potential basis of, you know, if Commissioner Miller believes that that's a requirement in order to meet condition number three, then that is appropriate.
Yes, but by saying.
By requiring to go out 10 minutes a day is not fall under condition number three.
I think it does.
I certainly think, there's some discretion in that, so I, I understand your position as well. And it sounds like that's not needed for you to find number three to be met.
And Commissioner Baker, I'd argue that this is also in the interest of the well-being of the surrounding businesses because dogs that are unhappy start barking and they would raise, potentially raise to the level of noise complaints from the surrounding users.
If they bark louder than the airplanes taking off right behind them.
Well, there is that.
The airplanes don't take off all the time. Living close to the airport, I can tell you that. We actually have 280 square feet. The outdoor space he quoted to us is 10 by 28. So if you're, if we end up accepting that condition, I'd make it 280 so that you end up with some shade.
I have another suggested condition. I think it resonates with me, what you said about the fact that we can have a very responsible, responsive and, and excellent business owner now, but the property, the CUP runs with the land, not with the owner. And understanding that that is a potential, I'd suggest that we add a condition that limits the maximum number of dogs at the facility at any given time to 40 so that somebody's not trying to, a subsequent owner isn't trying to pack them in there.
not trying to, a subsequent owner isn't trying to pack them in there. And I would also suggest that, let me make sure I understand this correctly. I'm concerned about the plant material outside and the fact that 40 dogs a day peeing on them tends to shorten the life of the plant material and that in interest of maintaining landscaping, as we were talking about earlier in this meeting, we should have a requirement that the applicant or the operator replace any plant material eaten by, destroyed by, damaged by the dogs. But are they, are the dogs getting outside of the...
I think what he suggested...
Is it a fenced area?
He has a fenced area currently and he wants to expand that.
Okay. And is there landscaping or trees or anything within the fenced area?
I think we... Yeah, Madam Chair, I would just indicate that perhaps it would be appropriate to include a requirement that the final landscape plan be, the operator shall ensure that the final landscape plan that's approved by the planning department is not, you know, is maintained, essentially.
Is maintained and if plant material is damaged, it will be replaced by the applicant.
And if he expands it, right. The other is adequate ventilation, adequate sanitation. I think those conditions should be in there. I think what he's explained to us looks like it works, but I think if we're, if it's going to be another operator, you want to make sure that the, and the conditions that would allow for adequate sanitation, ventilation and noise control.
And given that the applicant or the operator probably relies on the landlord to do the repairs of the equipment and both companies, it might be appropriate that we say if there are more than, I don't know, three complaints or five complaints or something within the course of a year to the City Hall regarding odors or sanitation, that the applicant needs to demonstrate to the Director of Planning remedial measures and they have to be corrected within 90 days. Something along those lines?
Yep. And then if dogs are walked outside, fecal matter is picked up. I mean, I just, it's, those are courtesy things, but there should be, there should be something in there that requires that.
I agree.
And that the property be maintained in a sanitary fashion while it's in operation. I mean, those, those are the things that I'm worried about. It sounds like he has a good operation and I'm relieved that you have the outside space so that I don't have to be inconsistent with approvals. But I do think we need a list of conditions that relate to this so if somebody else, one, there are conditions for this operator, but also conditions for a future operator. And so they, for me, the major ones are outside space and then sanitation. Odors.
Watching our attorney over there scribble quickly as well as Mr. Newell, is this something that you're going to feel comfortable reading back to us before the vote or do you want another meeting to get this put together?
I think we have all of the conditions except the one that you last stated relative to the 90-day compliance.
That they have 90 days. A plan for resolving, for remediating the odor or sanitation issues needs to be presented to the Director of Planning and that when approved, the applicant has 90 days to effectuate the corrective measures.
And for my dog who doesn't eat kibble and I'd be delighted to come to your facility, adequate refrigeration for people who bring dog food, real, real dog food, or real food for their dog. Yeah.
The direction we're going right now assumes that the landlord is going to approve the expansion?
No, he said he had 200, if I'm correct, he has 280 feet right now that's usable outside space that he's currently using.
So if you, if the applicant decided tomorrow to expand, take the walls down over the existing outdoor space and expand, you could do that?
The way that we would, the way that we would accomplish that is by installing a gate in the current wall and creating a new outdoor space past that.
So you equivocated a little bit on the timing for doing that work. So it seems like the CUP we're talking about approving is predicated on you doing that work. So I'm just wondering about the timing of this right now. It seems we're...
I think, if I'm correct, he said that he currently has...
Currently have...
He has 10 by 28, which is 280 square feet, which is 10 square feet per dog that's boarding at least, that he currently uses. The only thing that it's going to be conditioned on is that he's going to have to provide shade. He may not have that now.
Well, and I'm, that 280 square feet, is it fenced off and usable now? Okay.
It's walled in.
Okay.
It's walled in, fenced and usable.
The two, the two patios equal that 280 square feet? The two-star patio?
The one patio, the second one that we will get operational shortly is going to be more for enrichment. So it's where we're going to be doing enrichment games with one dog at a time. That's what the purpose of that second yard is for.
But you have one yard that you can bring the dogs to?
That is currently, yes, operational.
So I think, I think he currently has it. We're not requiring him to build more space.
Okay.
We'll allow, we'd be delighted if, because it would make your operation better if he could.
Absolutely.
But...
Okay, so it's just the existing walled-in space?
It's the existing walled-in space that's currently has, I'm trying to think, you have, on the ground, you have wood chips, which would be a nice surface.
Yeah, wood chips and concrete.
Wood chips and concrete and, so you have, he has an existing outside space that he's currently leased. So I think, I think we're okay if what we want to do is allow him to go into business with this to add with what he's currently offering. So do you want to run through the conditions?
So Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, we have conditions that you've outlined. The first being minimum of 280 square feet usable outdoor space shall be provided. At least 50% of that space shall be pervious surface and must be covered by a 50% shaded area. Number two, every dog shall be provided with at least two outdoor visits of at least 10 minutes per visit. And I don't know if that, if any, anyone has a concern about that during the summer or not, but...
I don't mind removing the 10-minute minimum, but I think it's important that there's at least two visits because that can be done in the early morning and evening.
I think allowing dogs a visit would be good.
And it's two visits daily, correct?
Two visits.
24-hour period, I think, yeah. That's what the intent...
Per 24-hour period. Max, number three, a maximum number of dogs at the facility shall be 40 at any given I don't know if the commission has a spec, wants to be more specific about overnight boarding or not, but that's the total number that could be allowed at the facility.
I think we said 27 for overnight boarding and a total of 40 dogs at the facility.
Okay.
Is that correct? I thought that if we had two from the same household, that we might end up with more...
If we do have, if we do have the same, from the same household, technically we could double our kennel space, right? So you would have two dogs per suite, which would be a total of 54 boarding.
Do you often have more than three, would you have more than three of those kennels doubled up?
It depends who's traveling.
But if we're, if we say 40, including the borders and the day, yeah.
It covers, you're fine. Forty's...
Good, okay. So I'll strike the 27 overnight and just keep it at 40? Number four, the operators shall be responsible for ensuring landscaping in the front yard is maintained and replaced as needed. That, okay, all right. Number five, the operator is responsible for mediating odor issues with the facility by submitting a plan to the planning director. The operator shall correct the odor issues within 90 days.
That should be odor and sanitation.
Number six, the operator shall ensure the facility and outdoor areas are maintained in a clean and sanitary condition at all times.
And maybe a sanitation plan, submitting a sanitation plan to the director? I mean, you should, you should get a sanitation plan. He's told us what he's doing, but you should get a plan.
Okay. Beyond what was already described in his letter, I guess we could ask that.
Yeah, just, I think the letter describing the sanitation plan that's acceptable to the director.
Okay.
That's just the cleaning protocols, sorry? The sanitation?
It's, it's how you dispose of waste and clean.
Gotcha.
How frequently you pick up debris in the yard, I think.
Soon as, soon as it comes out of their butt.
That's what we want you to, that's what we want you to put in writing.
Yeah, I know, as soon as it's, as soon as it's on the floor, it's in the garbage or in the toilet.
And the thought is, if you ever sell the facility to somebody else, they need a sanitation plan. So that's, that's why it's in the conditions.
And then, number seven, the applicant shall, or the operator shall maintain a refrigerator on-site to handle pet food as needed. The last one that we didn't have in the list that was discussed was the use of neighboring properties. So I don't know if that's another condition that the commission wanted to add or not.
I think to the extent that dogs are walked in the area, the, it should, the area should be kept, the operator should keep the area clean.
And they would not be permitted to use neighboring property?
Right. I think that was the concern.
Unless they had legal rights.
Was the commission expressed concern on the use of properties that may not be authorized to enter? So the applicant has already stated he doesn't intend to, but that was some discussion.
But the operator walks the dog around the buildings. I, you know, I can't see how we can, and we actually probably want him to be able to do that. We may not want him to use a neighboring property for defecation, but if the animal does, you clean it up. I don't know...
Oh, I'm sorry. By walking around the property, are we talking about in the public right of way or not? I was thinking, there's, there's an empty field next to it, but that's...
There's an empty field, there, there's also a parking lot. There's a large parking lot that he might walk the dogs around. I don't want to say he can't.
He's already indicated he's not intending to do that. Perhaps it would be appropriate to say that the operator shall, as a part of their normal operation, not use...
I would leave that out.
Yeah, or we could just take it out.
I mean, I really don't want to restrict that because I want him to have the ability to walk the dogs if they need it or the well-being of the dogs.
I just don't want him walking on somebody else's property.
It's standard in cities that have boarding facilities to take the dogs out and walk them around the neighborhoods.
Yeah, it is.
Around the neighborhood, yes, but that's in the streets, the sidewalks and things. I'm, I'm concerned about, and perhaps I shouldn't be concerned about some, looking out for somebody else's property.
It's, I mean, they're going to be walking around somebody, they're going to walk around somebody...
It's all the landlords?
It's all the landlords.
I think she's referring to the neighboring properties.
Oh, if it's all the landlords, I'm good with it. I thought it was privately owned by a different party.
It's, it's warehouses.
Can I speak to that one?
Yeah.
It would already be covered in one of the other conditions. Should there be complaints? If my dogs are defecating over people's properties, you guys are going to get complaints left, right and center. If we're not picking up our waste, we shouldn't be in business. Plain and simple.
Yeah, I think we leave that out. It's, the landlord knew who we rented to. Okay, we, that's in front of us. Any comments or I would take a motion?
Move to approve as conditioned.
I'll second that.
Comments? None? Thank you. Should we call the roll?
Vice Chair Alain?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Yay. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Planning Commission requests reports and comments. Any requests, reports and comments? I have one. Just, it's a sad one. I think people may have met at various parties, Joanne Bergman's husband, Tony, and just to let you know that he passed away on Sunday. And for those of us who knew him, we pretty much loved him. He's a pretty phenomenal man and really an important person in this community, being at the helm of La Villa Russe for 15, 20 years, volunteering in the business community and just a great storyteller of his life abroad in the world. But it's just very sad. So if you know Joanne, if you know Lauren, there is a celebration of life on Monday. And I think that's my only comment.
No major updates from us on our end. Certainly, it's, it's been a rough couple of weeks from those points of view. We've lost a couple of people from, in the planning world or in our department who we work closely with and we consider family. So it's been a pretty sad couple of weeks. So appreciate you bringing those comments forward, but no other updates, Madam Chair.
And with that, I'm going to adjourn our meeting until 5:30 PM on Wednesday, March 8th. But if any...
May 8th?
May 8th, sorry. Next year. If anybody knows anybody with planning skills, we have a very short window for applications to fill vacancies. I think it ends April 30th?
Very short.
Correct. Yes, the closing of the Planning Commission application window is April 30th.